Maybe I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley.
Here.
Vice President Hedlund.
Here.
Trustee McNell.
Here.
Trustee Parr.
Here.
And trustee Clements is absent.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, everybody. First, I'd like to tell you that our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February 25th, 7:00 PM, here at Haldane High School, Room 211. And the workshop topic will be the High School Detail Report, and that will include the Athletic Detail Report. The other thing I want to mention is NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association, hosts the Capitol Conference every year, and that conference is when we, school board members and superintendents descend on Albany to ask for more money, and to ask for more equitable funding for our schools. So I'm going to be attending on our behalf. I've attended before. It's a really interesting couple of days. On Sunday, you spend the whole day learning about the budget, and the executive proposals, and what NISBA supports, and what they don't support, and why. And then on Monday, you spend the day going to pointed meetings with your colleagues from your county, talking to your respective legislators, and you plead your case. So I'll be doing that on our behalf. And I'll let you know how it goes. And the other thing I want to share is that the Board of Education, trustee candidate petitions are available. We have one seat open for election, Peggy Clements's seat. The election is held same time the school budget vote is held. And those packets, Julia, I'll let you share how to get those packets if they're interested.
Interested candidates should come to the district office to pick up a packet or contact me by email, jufamularo@haldaneschool.org.
And if anybody is interested in board service, I'm very happy to share what it means. So feel free to reach out. And that's it. Turning it over to Dr. Benante.
Thank you, Ms. Daley. I had on the agenda, well jokingly, last meeting I said to Deputy Shelters that I had run out of nice things to say about him, or something to that effect. And I thought he would be here again this evening, but he's actually down at our girls' basketball game. So once again, I'd like to thank Deputy Shelters for his service to our school community. As the community is aware, Deputy Shelters has accepted another assignment within the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. We're very happy for him. This is something that's good for him and for his family. We're sad to see him go. This is his last week on campus with our students, although he is good about saying he'll come back and visit us from time to time. But perhaps more importantly and appropriate for this evening, I'm pleased to also introduce our board and members of our community to our new school resource officer, Deputy Amanda Collier, who's here this evening. Matt and Amanda have been working together over the course of this week. Matt's been helping with Amanda's transition to our school community. Amanda's had a busy week already. Attended a few safety team meetings on campus yesterday. And then today, had the opportunity to sit in on a presentation from our fourth graders, along with me and a few other of our educators, about what to do in our emergency planning if we ever have a natural disaster impact the Haldane community. So Amanda and I and Matt listened to our presentations from our fourth graders and their research. So Amanda's had a full week already, and will continue to be with us, with Matt, for the remainder of this week, and will start independently here next week. So Amanda, welcome to Haldane. We're very happy to have you. It's been a pleasure thus far. And that concludes my opening remarks. I can transition now right to our budget presentation. And as the board is aware, we're getting into a series of presentations from our administration on the budget development process. Ann's going to provide a little bit of detail at the start of tonight's presentation. And then I will provide a program overview, a brief program overview, for discussion with the board this evening. And with that, we'll turn it right over to Ann, and then Ann will hand it back to me.
Great, thank you. So tonight, I'm going to start giving you some highlights of the governor's executive proposal. And then we'll talk about the tax levy limit, and the program component expenditure trends. If you recall, in the past presentation, we did the administrative and the capital component. It'll be that chart that's familiar to you. And then Dr. Benante will take over with the background information, some projected costs, anticipated revenue, and then thoughts guiding the next year's budget development. So we'll start out with the executive proposal. Now, I know that we talk about foundation aid a lot, and foundation aid makes up the majority of our operating aid. This year, the proposal is talking about increases based on a particular tier that a school district may be in. And I'm not going to go in the various tiers, but they range from A to E. Haldane is in Tier E, and that is the minimum increase that a district is eligible for because of our low need and our high wealth. So if you went into any backup information that you could find on the executive proposal, we fall into that minimum aid increase category of Tier E. That translates into $5,588 increase for our foundation aid for next year. So other things that are in the proposal are troubling. I've had so far this past week, last week and yesterday, three webinars analyzing the proposal. One item that really stands out that they were talking about were the trends that we are now have to do increased reporting, and under the title of transparency at the state level and the federal level. The thought is that going forward, that may result in the state restricting on how we allocate that foundation aid. So, you know, we'd really have to go into detail on what we were going to do with our $5,588 to make sure that it was equitably distributed. So, but there's still a lot of reporting that has to be done going forward for that.
Does that reporting also impact the existing foundation aid, or only the increases?
That's not clear.
Okay.
There are some things that aren't clear. On the next slide, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail than I usually do on the numbers of the proposal, because there are some drastic changes. So one of the largest changes in this proposal is that, I know we've talked about formula aids. Those are expense-driven aids that, so next year, our aid would be based on what we spend this year. What the proposal is consolidating 10 expense-based aids and calling them foundation aid. I mean, you'll see that in, the visual's better when you see that on the next slide. But this is troubling as well, because they're going to freeze the expense-driven aids at a certain amount. So it doesn't matter if you spend more next year, you're not going to get more the following year. And they're going to just bundle that and call it foundation aid. Again, the fear is that going forward, those uses can be restricted when before they were clearly like, this was our BOSI's expenditures, we got BOSI's aid. But if it's all in foundation aid, it's hard to track those.
So is it that they're going to say, as of this year, everything that was aidable from an expense perspective, it was $200,000? That $200,000 is rolling into foundation aid, and that's a set figure going forward? And nothing, there will be no more incremental expense, but they're like lumping it in?
Correct. Subject to the foundation aid increases, whatever that formula will be for the future years.
So you can no longer adjust your aidable by whatever you spend?
Correct. Correct. And these are proposals, this has been tried in the past.
I got it all.
You're on it.
You got that?
All right.
This has been tried in the past. It didn't make it to the final budget. So, you know, but still, it's troubling if it ever does. Again, what will affect our taxpayers, proposed changes to the STAR, continuing the trend of pushing homeowners from the STAR exemption to the STAR credit. And the threshold for STAR exemption is proposed to be lowered from $250,000 of combined annual income for a family to $200,000. What that means is, if you are enjoying the STAR exemption, you have a lower tax bill. If you're a new homeowner to the district, or your income is above the threshold, you can't have the exemption and get the lower tax bill anymore. You have to get the credit, which is mailed to you after the fact. And the fear with this is every year, that exemption is lowered, and eventually, the exemption will disappear. And people's tax bills will be higher than they're used to. Just a little note that if you do have the STAR exemption, you're capped at 2%. It can't go any higher. Your exemption can increase, but they haven't capped the STAR credit. So you might actually get a net, more money if you choose the credit. And you can choose the credit, but you can't go back. If you're at the credit, you can't go back and get the exemption. So it's something to research, something to think about, but it's all an individual item. But if you go on the New York State Tax website, you will, the Department of Taxation and Finance, you will get a lot of detail on the exemption versus the credit. But there are changes coming for that, too. So this is the executive budget run. On the left side are the 1920 base year aids, and on the right is the 2021 estimated. So I highlighted the foundation aid totals that you're going to see compared. That's where the $5,588 increase comes in. And that's between the new subtotal foundation aid, which is old foundation aid plus everything that's in a bracket, our expense-driven aids that they're collapsing to the foundation aid total on the right. So that difference is just $5,588. And as you can see, a lot for us disappears. Because if that's just held, it's called held harmless, that it can't go below that, but it's not going to go above that either.
Is this a, what do you think's likely heard of that happening?
I would hope, and I think it's less likely to happen than, but it's still dangerous that it could. And really, once it's in the budget, it's not going to be teased back out. So for the tax levy limit, there are also changes for the 2021 tax levy limit that we don't have all the guidance from the state education department yet. So this is my best estimate. What we don't have guidance on are some of the exemptions for the capital aid, because now BOSI's aid is being allowed. But they're not clear as to how that fits into the calculation. So we don't get a lot of BOSI's aid. So, BOSI's aid, I'm sorry, for the capital component, not BOSI's aid. We do get a lot of BOSI's aid, but not for the capital part. So the estimates are close, but next presentation, they're going to probably be a bit different. So our maximum allowable tax levy estimated is a 3.29% increase over last year. What is known is the allowable growth factor. This is where that 2% in quotes comes from. It's really 1.81% was the CPI increase, so that's used in the calculation. That calculates to an increase of $658,056 for our tax levy. Just some reminders that our rollover budget increase was just over $1 million. And that is leaving us with a current deficit, with this higher tax levy limit considered, of $431,240. Just a reminder, that's before any retirement breakage. Because the proposal, we haven't released the proposal to you. We're still working on that. This is based on rollover figures.
And just so I remember for myself, the maximum, it's the 3.29 that you use to calculate the $658,000?
Correct.
And the allowable growth factor factors into the calculation in some way, but I cannot remember how. And you don't need to tell us.
There's many steps that you arrive at your maximum allowable tax levy. When you compare that number to last year's tax levy, that's the 3.29% increase.
Ann, I think it grabs, you know, any community member's attention when they see the tax levy limit at a figure higher than 2%. Because we're so accustomed to thinking of it as a 2% tax gap. And granted, there's the formula, but I know you had worked on as well, some background work on why, and some of the machinations with our debt.
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding me.
Influencing the levy limit to be higher?
Yes. If you don't mind, I'm going to, I'd like to go back to that. Yes, thank you very much. So, I know it's a little bit hard to see, but this is important, so I'm glad that you reminded me of that. If you look in our 1920 building aid, which is this line here, if you can see the arrow, it's $464,726. Next year, our building aid drops quite substantially, $346,106. That is because, and I think that some of our board members might recall this conversation, where when the high school was built, and the first round of debt was sold, I wasn't here. I would just like to clarify that. The, it was aided over 15 years, but we're making payments over 30. So it's been 15 years that we took the first round of bonds for this building, and now our aid is done. We're still paying, though.
Is that because just aid, maximum aid is 15 years?
No, usually.
We just chose to do it that way?
Something happened, because the second round of debt was appropriately.
We aided and paid it at the same term as.
Right. It's 30 years. So somewhere, something happened in that mix. So in the calculation for the taxable, the maximum tax levy limit, you subtract your capital expenditures, net of building aid. So if you have, and I'm going to just make it, you know, easy with, if you have $1 million of debt, and you're getting $464,000, I'm going to round that to half a million. You have half a million dollars of, it's called excludable items. So you add that back in to your tax levy limit. So now, go to 2021. If you have $1 million of debt, and you're getting $300,000 of aid, you can increase your taxes 700,000 because of that differential. So that's what's causing us to go above that 2%. Did I lose everybody? We're good? Okay.
Essentially, you're levying what you lost in aid.
On the taxes. Right. But that's all part of that calculation that I don't show anymore.
That's why ours is higher.
That's why ours is higher for this year.
Why is our transportation aid going up so much?
Our rate changed. We have more expenses that were reported in 1819.
Okay.
And we're enjoying a higher rate for next year, an aidable rate. It's going from .2 to .25. Okay. All right. Thank you. And again, this is the grid that you saw for the administrative and the capital components, comparing three years of actual, the 1920 budget, projected for 1920, and then the rollover budget figures.
Josh, before I transition.
Did you have a question about that?
No.
Okay.
There should be.
Okay. So before I get into too much detail, last school year, I had provided the board with some background information on our instructional program. And I was able to pull comparative information from other districts in our region. As I was developing my slides for tonight's presentation, I noted that that information was not yet updated in our state databases. So I can't pull comparative information yet. I anticipate that I would be able to do so in the next couple of weeks. So I'm trying to make do to keep us somewhat on schedule. But I'm happy to, I think the board appreciated being able to see, for example, class size, average class size, not just for us, but for other schools in the region as a point of information in the budget development process. I can't show the comparisons this evening, but I will be able to in a future presentation, or I anticipate that I'll be able to and will as soon as that information is made available to me in the state portal where I draw it from. So there won't be quite as much level of detail in this presentation this evening as I provided last school year, but I'll look to backfill it in subsequent presentations for the board, so we can always come back to that. So one of those, a general overview of our enrollment over the last five years. I'm just providing this to you in a different format. This is by cohort or by grade level. 2015 in the first column through 2019, the school year, in the last column. We currently have 798 students enrolled in the school district. That's down from last year. I think if I were to point out a trend here, you'll see classes of 50 or so coming into the school district, perhaps even a little bit lower. And we're graduating generally, classes of 65 to 70 students each year. So we're having smaller cohorts come into the school district each year, and we have slightly larger cohorts exiting. The enrollment study is still ongoing. I've seen some initial information come back for verification from Western Suffolk BOSIs. I'll provide that to you as they finalize their report. I believe, not to let the cat out of the bag, that's a trend we're going to see continue in the next five years or so. But we'll get into that in more detail once the enrollment study is complete. Part of, I guess, a theme I'd like to point out for this evening is that when you're small, there's some great things about being a very small school district in terms of sense of connection with kids and with families and our campus design. When it comes to budgeting, it presents some really unique obstacles. It's difficult to account for some efficiencies as you would in a larger district. So that's just a unique constraint that we have, and our administration has to consider as we're going about the budget development process for next school year. Especially with the prospect of budget deficit in that $450,000 range. It's difficult to cut around that, the periphery, without really examining our human resources. So at the elementary section, I'm just drilling down into each level here. This is an overview of the number of students we have at each grade level, the number of sections, the number of classes, if you will, that we have at each grade level, and the average number of students in each section, you know, with following normal rounding rules here. So you can see that our class sizes range from an average of about 16 as a low in first grade, up to 21 at fifth grade. It is not uncommon that you would see the average section size remain lower at the kindergarten, first, and second grade levels, and then gradually get higher as you go through third, fourth, and fifth grade. And this is just, again, background information for the board. And in a future presentation or slide, I can show you this information as a school average against other elementary schools in districts through the region, which I will and did last year. Here, I'm just pulling the average class size in our English 7 and Math 7 classes. So again, this is the same cohort of students that are in each, taking these courses. So we have 62 students in seventh grade, spread across four sections for English and four sections for math. That's an average of approximately 16 students in each of those classes. Now, for high school, high school is unique. So.
Just before you go on to high school, can you go back to, how many of these classes are either co-taught or have full-time aid support?
So our kindergarten classes come with aid support.
Yeah.
Almost full-time.
Okay.
Our co-taught sections range. So we don't have a dedicated special educator to every grade level. However, we would run elements of a co-taught program at every grade level. So there is a class at every grade level of the two, three, or four sections that we have that is designated as the co-taught class. We may have a special educator in that classroom for anywhere from a couple of hours to up to probably four hours of the school day. It will range depending on the needs of the students who are allocated in those classes. My experience has been that that can really vary by school. So I've been in schools where we dedicated one section at each grade level for co-teaching. And regardless of the number of students who are eligible for special education, we had a full-time special educator in that classroom for the entire day, dedicated that class for the entire day. The elementary school where I was principal, that's what we had. The difficult decisions, especially in tough financial times, where there may be a real value around doing that, and a desire to do it, is that when you're limited, and let's say you only have one or two students with IEPs at a particular grade level, and you're now assigning one dedicated teacher, whereas in another grade level, you may have 12, and you're assigning one dedicated teacher. So that's where I've seen districts, and been a part of decisions in the past, where you've had to decide, can we continue to afford to dedicate one full-time special educator to that co-taught setting without having to be forced to make a reduction in another area where you may not want to? So I'm happy also when we get to the special education report, which is later this month, if the board desires for us to drill down a little further into that to do so. Okay, so I spoke of elementary and math. So I'm going to foray into some of the high school classes here. So just as an overview, again, we run many sections in high school, so I'm trying to hit on the core courses here. Global History and Geography, which again is a ninth grade and 10th grade course generally. Our 10th graders have some different options that they can begin to pursue in 10th grade. So that's why you see the number of students vary. But we're averaging 18 to 20 students in those sections. I also want to show you, so for English, this was just to illustrate some unique scheduling constraints. So this is an overview. This is in every English class that we offer, or course that we offer here. There are some electives that are not listed here. I'm trying to fit to one slide. But you can see certain core courses like English 9R. So that's Regents English, ninth grade class, all of our students take, who are freshmen. Five sections of that, an average class size of approximately 18. But as you look through, and as we make more options available to our students, and 10th grade is a good example of this. So we have Regents level 10th grade English, and then Honors level English at 10th grade. So you can see the cohort is split there, with some students pursuing Regents, some students pursuing Honors. Now, depending on what these classes are now running opposite, and maybe it's an elective or another course that I'm required to take as a student, we lose some economy of scale, if you will, some potential to be efficient. So Julia would speak more eloquently to this about what these classes now run up against or opposite, and how it may become problematic in a student's schedule, where I may have a desire to collapse a section and make one section of 24 students. I really can't if I want a student to be able to take other courses that they desire or that are part of their academic programming. And you can see the variability here now. The one caveat I just want to make is where you see an asterisk. These are special education classes. So these are, at times Regents level classes, but because of student needs, we have purposely kept that class incredibly small to support our students more readily. So where you see an asterisk under English ten and twelve, also an English eleven R section there, those are for classes for students with unique learning needs. But as we go down here, you can see the variability really in these AP English twelve is a good example of that. Twenty-five students want to take it. You could certainly make the case that we could run that as one section at twenty-five. Again, these are students who, again, are AP college-bound, certainly students. But because of, again, some unique parameters in their scheduling, we choose to run it as two separate courses. So students who want to take it can, but at the same time, they, we can run it at two different times of the day. So students maybe can take another, another course where it's being offered the first time. It could be an elective or something else. So the average per section there is thirteen. But we know ideally we would be able to have all of those students in one class, but it would force them to perhaps not take something that they're interested in. So I just, I did not show this last year, but I want to give the board just an example of an overview of what are, how, how we, we would say load our sections across one department. And this isn't even the full schedule of classes in that department, because I believe you've heard Julia reference it before about some of the constraints that we have, and we try to avoid, or I should say, we try to the greatest extent possible to schedule and run our classes so students can take the majority of classes that they want to take. But that may be something we have to reevaluate moving forward, depending on our enrollment, depending on our budget situation, and that's something we're working through as an administration right now. So I, I'm just going to go into some projected costs. This does not include a rollover yet for this school year, but just to give you, there are not several, there are not many lines, if you will, that come under the, the umbrella of curriculum and instruction outside of salary. So I would say with curriculum and instruction, our predominant spending is in the area of instruction. It's our, it's teacher salaries. So in the area of curriculum and professional learning, we have a few expenses across our budget development. So curriculum writing, as you'll see there, and our trend over the last few years. Staff development, which is funding we reserve for outside conferences and workshops. For a few years, we had our work with New Tech Network there. You'll see that coming into this school year. We had paid off that contract last school year. The board may recall my discussing that with them. We had the ability to do so, and we did. And then we reserve certain funding for BOSI's conferences and workshops as well. So over the last four years, you can see that we've really trended down on these lines in the budget. And that's something that we utilize for the development of staff.
Where's the outside conferences, workshops in the first two years? Were those also, was a big chunk of that also New Tech Network?
Yes, so, and Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, we had reserved money for the contract with New Tech, which is what you see there. But we also had money we had put aside for attendance at, I believe, national or regional conferences that was associated with that work.
That's correct. It included travel, and then it was also included additional slots because the contract with New Tech was a certain amount. And if there were new teachers or teachers that we wanted to send, we paid additional for that.
And we had really scaled that back in eighteen nineteen, so you see the reduction there, and I believe the board had discussion about that. What I can say for nineteen twenty, that number that's reflected there is not for expenditures at all related to New Tech. That's just for other conferences that we've budgeted for, for our staff to attend.
The expense for Judy Barbera, that's not in here.
It is not included in here. That'll show up in our, our BOSI's budget, I believe, Ann. Is that correct?
Correct, okay.
And that's an important distinction, Jen, that I want to point to. So while we are trending down in these areas, we did make a significant investment, and I would qualify part of Julie's, excuse me, Judy's work as professional development and curriculum development. It's also leadership support as well, broad leadership support. So it doesn't quite fit into any of these lines, but you would see it in our BOSI service request. The revenue end, we don't, we do receive some, have some funding streams for revenue. They're not extensive. So our federal grants, which are Title One, Title Two A, and Title Three. Title One is our federal allocation generally for students who are economically disadvantaged. Title Two A are federal dollars that we receive for staff development. And Title Three are federal dollars that we receive for students with limited English proficiency or are E and L students. We don't receive this funding and, or the, our allocations until later on in the school year. Honestly, after the budget development process has concluded. It's important to note with Title One, as an example of this, so again, these are federal dollars. So one may assume that, well, we're receiving less funding in nineteen twenty, so we must have fewer students. It's not true. What's happened, the Department of Education, US Department of Education has changed its fund distribution allocation. So what we see is more money going to our private or parochial schools as a set-aside. So we're required by law to designate a certain set-aside amount for private and parochial schools within our attendance zone. So as the legislation, or as the regulations continue to shift, even though we have more students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, we actually have fewer federal dollars going towards those students on our campus. More federal dollars are following those students who are in, or required set-aside amounts for private or parochial schools. So you'll see that number vary by shifts in administration at the federal level pretty significantly.
How do we determine if someone is eligible for free and reduced lunch? Is it self-reporting, or do we determine it's self-reporting?
It is, yeah. So we want to make a point upon registration, upon at our, at our district level to make sure that families are aware of their ability to access that, that program. There's a minimal amount of paperwork that has to be completed, and, but yes, we rely on our family self-reporting that. Kind of the rule of thumb is we're always, we're likely, whatever our number is or percentage is, and we're right around, I think, thirteen percent, it's usually higher because there's a stigma attached to it. So we assume if we're at thirteen percent, we're, I don't want to throw another number on there, but most districts assume they're under, underrepresented in that regard, because there's families who just will not fill out the paperwork. It, I also should point out, Margaret, I'm sorry, if we ever anticipate a situation with a family where they may be eligible, we are sure to facilitate delicately the fact that they may be eligible for that program and making sure that they're aware of that.
Well, the paperwork comes in the summer packets, right?
It does.
But if something changes mid-year, I think that's when.
That's where we, we are good about making sure if there's a change in family situation or circumstance, if we know about it, our social workers and our other support staff are attuned to the fact that our families may now be eligible, may not have been previously, and facilitating the completion of that paperwork.
Thank you.
Yep. And then our textbook aid amount, it's not a lot of money, but generally, we receive a designated aid allocation per student. So this is a fairly stable figure that you see across hovering in the forty-seven to forty-nine thousand dollar range. We want to make sure that as we receive this aid, that we, we use it, but we're also careful not to go too far beyond it. We have in the past, but with good planning, you typically can avoid such things. So this is where you'll hear Judy talk about curriculum cycle reviews and the curriculum council. The purpose of that, and one of the intentions, is to anticipate where we may need to replace, replace a textbook, what schedule we're on in doing so, so we don't have to overspend, I shouldn't say overspend, where we don't have to spend money beyond what our aid allocation is from the state if we don't need to. And generally, good planning, you can account for that and be replacing textbook series, if you will, in accordance with what your aid allocation is for that year. So we're getting closer here, you can see, because we still had some work this year that we had to finish up from previous commitments. But you can see that we brought that figure much more closer to what our aid allocation is, or was from New York State.
And are we using, getting any textbooks on our digital devices? Is that saving us any money?
I don't believe we currently are utilizing textbooks on the devices. Having background experience with that, the savings isn't quite what you would think. No, no. It's more of an ease of accessibility. The cost is, is generally the same. Yeah, one would think.
You would think.
But the textbook companies make sure they package things in a way to get their money.
Got it, okay.
It's a good question. I don't think we've had a textbook adoption recently. But when we do, because we will, that's a good question to ask whoever will be presenting on the textbook adoption. Usually, we'd have a department chair or coordinator come and present what was investigated. Our chairs or coordinators review the quotes with, get quotes from the companies and talk through digital copies versus paper copies. Many companies now, they, they will throw in the digital copy with your purchase of the hardbound textbook.
I would think where it would save you money was when they did the updates.
Yeah.
You know, when they did the quick revisions, yes.
Yeah. One would think. It's very logical, right? It's also something to note, when standards change, usually requires a full now revision to a textbook. So we, that's why I'm always wary of how many standards have shifted at a state level. Because what follows that is not just the curriculum work you have to do and the training, but now there's a soon after a textbook purchase to follow that. So it's, it's expensive. When standards change, it's not just, there is, there, there is a legitimate cost impact to the school. It might be a year or two that trail, so that standard shift, but it inevitably will occur. So you'll see a few textbook recommendations come in your way soon, because the board approves those. And then our library aid amount is, is minimal, but we do receive a little bit of aid from the state on this. And you can see this year, we tried to account for our expenditures to match our aid amount. Okay, so just a couple of thoughts with me, and again, with the caveat that there'll likely be some comparative information presented to you in future presentations. The coherence planning process has really reiterated a continued focus on curricular alignment and professional learning. I know it's a bit premature because the draft or the plan has not yet been presented to the board, but as I have tried to keep the board updated, there are a few key strategy areas that were identified for focus in the first six to twelve months of the strategic planning process. One is specific to a goal that we've had as a district in previous years, including this one, which speaks to K-12 alignment in curriculum, which is a dedicate, it takes time and money to, to bring ourselves closer to alignment. And the second was a recognition that we need to reexamine our professional learning structures. So you're going to hear more from me about that through the coherence planning process, but it is relative to our budgeting, I believe, for curriculum and instruction. Obviously, there's a direct tie there. We did say at the beginning of the budget development process, to the extent possible, where we knew focus areas through strategic, strategic coherence planning, we would try to incorporate them into the budget development. So I think we know, we knew that prior to coherence planning. There was, those were two areas we needed to continue to focus on. Coherence planning, I would say, is only validating that these are two areas of focus moving forward. I, I realize I don't have the comparative slides this evening, but I'm going to take a gander and say that our class sizes remain highly competitive for our region. I do believe you will see that illustrated in my follow-up presentations. But we are trending towards a level in certain areas that may be unsustainable. I, I really do think through discussion with our building administrators that, that that's an area we have to, to examine, especially considering what our rollover budget deficit is. I don't, and I'm wary, I don't want this to come across at all as doom or gloom, but over the long term, we are trending, our, our enrollment is trending down, and that's likely to maintain. So at some point, we have to ask ourselves, those class sizes are only going, those average class sizes are only going to decrease. So at some point, I don't like the term, but you have to right-size or make an adjustment to keep your class sizes at a very healthy range, but also to not overspend in an area where, and sacrifice the other things you're trying to do as a school system to, to make sure our kids have a well-rounded experience here. So one potential solution or approach that I'm considering for next school year is how our master schedules influence this issue. So there might be a fair middle ground here where we reexamine our master scheduling at the middle and high school level in particular, and while we do it, we'd also look at the elementary school to see if we can continue to maintain a rife academic course opportunities for our kids, but at the same time realize some efficiencies in, in staffing through how we schedule our buildings. Our middle school and our element, or our middle school and our high school run on two different schedules, but we share some staff. We lose efficiency that way. That's known. I think it's time we have to really start to look into that and perhaps bringing more alignment between those two schedules as a potential solution to that. That generally takes a year to do. So you may see something, a recommendation from me in my proposal next month that includes master schedule work and a commitment of funding in that area. But it's a short-term investment that I think gets us a long-term solution, or maybe. So you'll hear me reference that, and you may have already heard me reference that in other forums. So those are just two concluding thoughts as we continue to work on budget development for, for this school year. Or for next school year, I'm sorry. And I think that's it for me.
I wanted to say that I think the, we talked about this in the beginning, that the, the timing of the strategic coherence plan is not ideal
Right.
with our budget, right? What kind of coming into it, but we're in the middle of budget, and we talked about that last night a bit at our strategic planning forum that Margaret and I were both at. But in order to make the strategic coherence plan work and really be true to it, we are going to have to shift how we budget to reallocate money towards the things that the school district does if we decide that it is our, are important. But in terms of the K through twelve alignment, I don't see that as a reach because that's part of our district goals.
Correct.
Right? So to me, even though that is something that the strategic coherence plan is addressing and is in draft form, it's part of your, our district goals. It's something that we've been talking about for two years. So I think moving forward with K through twelve alignment, to me, doesn't feel like a, a reach.
And well, our focus over the last two years or eighteen months has been looking at the internal structures and, and how we can, before we make any commitment to spending money, what internal structures can be brought into greater alignment to help us as part of that goal. Obviously, we did make an investment in Judy, or in BOSI support, I should say, which has helped accelerate that. And Judy has two big projects she's worked on this year that she'll continue to report out to the board on that will help. But as we continue to now, or eventually foray into core content area alignment, so Judy is focused on academic intervention. She's going to focus the second part of the school year. She's still deliberating with the curriculum council on what the focus will be, but it, it won't, I don't believe it will be on a core academic area yet. But as we enter into that, so let's say we want to prioritize the alignment of our ELA curriculum or mathematics curriculum, it's going to take a certain level of human resource to do that, of leadership support to do that. I've been candid with the board about this, obviously, through last year's budget process. So whether that be continued funding through BOSI's, or we determine that we want to accelerate it even more, a dedicated person in that role full-time, that's up for discussion, and that's something that we'll be talking about in the, in the coming months.
How concerned do we have to be about that freshman class of ninety-two?
Yeah. Well, I always say it's good to have more students than fewer students. But when you say concerned, what do you?
In terms of, that's a big jump from the, these next three years to that year. What kind of funding are we going to need for those guys for, you know, setting them up for guidance counselors? When they're putting in eight, eighteen applications apiece, and we've got one guidance counselor trying to take care of all of that, all those things that senior year happens? That's a really big class. That's the biggest class I, I remember.
Right. So something Julia would speak. Right. So something Julia would speak to and very well may through this process is making sure we don't lose or we maintain a certain level of integrity to the support that our families have come to appreciate and what make us an exceptional school district in many ways. So projecting that out is something that we're trying to anticipate in our budget. There will be years, as you'll see in the overview, where we have a bubble. And we may just have to accept the fact that it's going to be a little bit more stressful this year because we have a few more kids in this one particular cohort. But we don't have that, that's not a trend that continues in cohorts behind it or cohorts, you know, in front of it, whatever that may be. You have years like that in a, in a school system. So I, I think as part of our conversation, we're trying to delineate between what's just going to be one of those years because you happen to have more kids. And that happens from time to time. It's happened in our elementary school a little bit as well. Versus what's now a trend that, that's continuing into the high school and making sure we've accounted for it. And that's where the enrollment study really helps. Because not only will the enrollment study give us and anticipate enrollment, something you're going to see in as well as a migration trend. So we tend to get a bump, for example, in ninth grade. But we also tend to lose a few students between ninth grade and 10th grade. I don't know if that's as well-known. We do tend to get a bump. Obviously, we have students tuitioning from Garrison, and that's very well-known. But at the same time, we tend to also lose a few students from ninth grade to 10th grade. So, you know, 92 sometimes becomes 87. It's still relatively high compared to what we're used to, but you'll see it in the enrollment study, that trend of migration as well, and how we tend to take on students and lose students in particular pockets through, through, as those cohorts move through the school system. And that's helpful to us from a planning perspective, and it allows us to have a much deeper conversation with the board to answer questions like the ones you just, you just posed, Margaret.
I would think it would be important when the enrollment study is being presented, which is when?
Soon.
Yep. Soon. To also reference, I know Garrison did their, did an enrollment study recently as well.
Yeah, they cross-reference their, Garrison's work in ours. I can see that in the draft. Again, there's a few, remember, we did also a facility study concurrently with it. So they're presenting it to us as one. So they have finalized the enrollment piece, but they're finalizing now the facilities piece. And I just, I have that in my office now. So both, so the enrollment end, I feel pretty confident with. But I want to make sure we're being thorough and with the facilities end as well, obviously, because that has its own implications. So both will be presented to the board at the same time.
Can I just make a request for the budget presentations? I would find it helpful to receive the presentation before
Content.
Tuesday night.
Got it.
I understand you want to keep it in executive content before the public meeting, so you can give context to everything that's in it for the public. But for me, as a board member, I, I would really value being able to look at the numbers a little bit and digest and have some questions.
You most certainly can. I, I will say for tonight's presentation, as Ann mentioned, we were trying, we received information very late on those, on some of those formulas. So we want to, so it was a little delayed tonight, not to make an excuse, but you're absolutely right. We, we can do that as, and certainly in the ones that follow, that won't be an issue.
Okay, moving on from the budget, are we, yeah? Any communication from the public at this time? Okay, we're going to go into our information reports. These are here for the board's review. And then consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Some moves.
Second.
These are our minutes from the January 21st meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, actually. Um.
Any discussion?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. The health and wealth, welfare services contract, was that the one from Dobbs Ferry? How does that work? What, what is that for? So this is for health and welfare services for students who are part of this district but are attending school in Dobbs Ferry.
Very district.
And what is the money for?
That is for services that we provide to those students, should they be requested. Maybe nursing, testing.
So normal school health.
It's, it's normal school health. And this is just something that happens every year.
And it doesn't matter whether they're in a private institution, when they're in a public institution. We have, we have health, financial responsibility, health responsibility for our students, no matter where they end up, basically.
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business, the Board of Education self-evaluation. John, I'll turn it over to you.
Fantastic. Thank you. First, thank you to all the board, and pay you as not here, for contributing your feedback. I, I feel like everybody's a little hard on themselves in terms of what we feel. So for the, for the public, one of our two goals for this year were, were perform self-evaluation for the board, and the second one was policy audit. So once we get the policy, we'll start auditing, auditing it. But at least we're taking steps towards a self-evaluation. This was meant to be a mid-year sort of informal. So everybody shared the top-line comments. And I think from my perspective, it didn't map any differently than I would have expected. I think people's strengths that they pointed out were a lot around how the board governs itself and sets policy and, and policies and procedures, accountability, and then thinking about how do we manage the budgeting process and fiscal responsibility. I think the opportunities were sort of in, from my summation, were in two big buckets. One was communication. I think we feel like there are a lot of venues for communication to the public, this being one, open to the public. We have board minutes, we have board docs. But I don't think we ever get a sense of, are we being heard? Is this the right amount? Is this more or less, are people understanding what's going on? And there was also a couple of comments about sort of ongoing monitoring of the growth and success of the program through data or observation or that sort of thing. So those are, those are the things that I found and what I pulled together. But I would welcome any further insights from the board as I see fit.
Sean, did you, were you about to say something?
Just smacking my lips, thinking, you know. I, I, no, I mean, that's a good summary. I, I would say that communication as a bucket is always wise because we've, we have a structure that is hierarchical and is well-ordered. And I think we follow those procedures wisely. And sometimes it can be confusing to people who don't understand what that procedure is. So it's really, we are fully, we are fully transparent with all of those procedures and policies. It's available. But it's, I find myself continuing to have to educate the public. And I'm, I, one of the things I know myself is, oh, I feel like being more proactive about educating everyone in our community about, you know, how it runs and why it runs the way it does is always useful so that people's expectations for what action looks like and what is possible, I think, is clear, you know? So that no one's ever confused about what, what actually is going on in the course of our meetings, for instance, which sometimes that can be confusing, you know, if you're never, if you're not familiar with Robert Rules of Order, for instance, something very basic that we all know, or that we are, we had to learn to know in one way or another as the process. But I do think that, you know, I'm proud of the way we communicate. I think we communicate very well and very openly and transparently, and I'm very proud of that.
Yeah, I think we've been talking about it a lot, the idea of, is how do we know how our, our communication is working? What is working about it and what isn't working about it? How do we find that out?
Exactly.
Except for people buttonholing you at Food Town, which is like sample size of one, right?
Sample size of one and, and are the loudest voices the, really representing
Right.
the greater community? It's really hard to know.
Yeah.
So we've been trying to figure out ways to know. We've talked about surveys or, you know what, how do we know? I don't know that we have an answer. It's just something that I think we have to keep.
What have we tried?
Figuring out.
We tried, has the board tried stuff before in terms of? I know that Dr. Bowers tried to do like coffee herself as the superintendent. I don't know whether we've done things where we're trying to say, do outreach, I don't even know the process of the procedure.
Come have coffee with John Heavens.
Or I don't know what, are there comparables that other board, boards do to try to get a sense of? Do you know what the board is doing? Are you interested in learning, like?
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about surveys, like, like climate, climate surveys, like, do you feel informed? Like two, two, three-question surveys. Do you, do you feel like you're informed? But we always come back, and I wish Peggy was here to share her opinion on surveys because they're, they're only a sample size of a very small select, of group of people.
Right.
And so in order to really survey the, the whole community, you can't just do an online survey.
Right.
Right? It really takes a very comprehensive approach, in-person conversations, in Spanish, you know, in the classrooms. It's, it's a lot of work. And I don't, we definitely have not taken that step. So every time we've batted around the idea of a survey, it's always met with the idea, well, it's, that's not really that comprehensive.
And what are we trying to measure? Do we? I, like, have you had experience with the previous boards that tried to either proactively do more communication outside of what we know here, right? Which is the, the meeting, the?
No, not, I, I should, I've been a part of, or work closely with boards that have attempted things, but I think resolved to the same struggle. Hearing a similar point of feedback maybe from the community and not really knowing what the best method is. And some things perhaps in one community that also resonate and seem to work and others don't. I saw it really evolve even in my home district where early on, board members were very active attending certain events, but as board members, so certain school events. And engaging the community, engaging with folks, you know, at a marching band competition or an athletic event, whatever it may be, and doing a, a good job of that. But I would say that same strategy now wouldn't, wouldn't be effective. So as the dynamics in a community change, I think that the strategy has to change with it. One thing I see in a superintendent doing now, though, internally, is going to each respective school and meeting with the faculty with a couple of board members as their schedule allows, which I think internally helps a lot, you know, in terms of connection to the staff and hearing from the staff, what, what's going well, what issues there may be. And I think that's a little easier because there's a captive audience and there's a method internally to speak with literally all of our staff. So if that's something the board desires in terms of internal processes, I, I, I think there's a way to do that, to do it well. But in terms of external with the community, I think I'm looking to you just as, I don't know, what do you think? What would work here? So I, I, I think it's something for, for more discussion. And, and it may be something for a retreat where we engage, I don't know if NISBA or other, another entity, or perhaps another district, because I certainly don't mind asking the superintendent's groups, you know, is there something that a district is doing that they feel good about in terms of engaging the community and coming to, and sharing with us in a retreat format what that is and what that looks like? And then perhaps working through it together to come up. But it, it came up in the coherence planning as well. I think we have a strategy related to that. So we keep hitting on the similar themes that, over the last couple of years. So I think we're properly identifying the issue. But I, I hold, just for myself as the administration, a similar level of kind of question about what would be effective here, you know, in, in Haline and Phillips Town. So.
And I, I think also conversely, and somebody else correct me if I'm way off base. I also haven't heard loud voices from the community saying, we have no idea what's going on. You're hiding stuff from us. This is not a burning platform that there's an immediate problem need to be solved. But I think it's a sense among us that we're like, we don't know. That it's more of a, wow, maybe things could be better, but I wouldn't know what that would solve, the end that that would solve.
I think Sean hit on, you know, the good, there's the procedural stuff that, you know, I think we'll always find we're trying to keep people or praise people of or inform them of, you know, when it comes to the function of a board or a board meeting. I, I think we're always going to have to do that. There's a level of explanation there. Because that tends to be probably issue-specific, right? I, I want to come engage at a board level because there's something on an agenda that's of concern to me. But by and large, we don't typically have a lot of people who are coming to board meetings. So that I, I think we just accept. But we want to make sure as well, there's a lot of good work that's going on in the school community and making sure that's being shared and reaching people. And not take for granted, they just know about it, because I think there's a lot of really great things going on in our school that if you're not paying attention, you're going to miss. But if we're also not putting it in front of you in a way that it's going to resonate, you're going to see it, or open it up, whatever it may be. You know, we're, we're losing an opportunity to, to demonstrate the, the, the work that's going into educating our community's children.
And I think there's also, as you were talking, it made me think, there, there's a difference between what is the board trying to communicate about board work to the community? And what is the, the district, the superintendents, the principals trying to communicate about what's happening in the buildings to the community? You know, and those are two different things. It's not our job to communicate what's happening in the elementary school, but it is our job to communicate about the budget. Right? And then, then they all, they all Venn diagram over each other. But I think we also have to like, you know, stay focused on like what is
What's within our domain?
what's within our domain to communicate. And we are, you know, it, it always feels like we're not accessible. And yet, if people have a, an issue, we all know, they find us. Right? I mean, via email, via Food Town, via our meetings, like, we are accessible. Like, if people really want to talk to us, they do. I think our task, though, is how do, how can we get more out to the community preemptively? You know, to clue them in to all the work we're doing. I don't have the answer to that one. But that definitely came up for us. And what was the other one you said?
Data collection.
Data.
Data collection.
And just monitoring ongoing. For me, it came, it came across as, because I was thinking about some of the workshop presentations where we get great depth of knowledge about a program or a school or a discipline or something. But it's hard for, personally, it's hard for me to keep track of like, are we making progress? It's, it's such a point, it's a point in time, which is great. But then is that, is that program advancing year over year, given the investments we're making in curriculum? Given the investments we're making in people, given the investments we're making in whatever? Like, I want that thing to be X percent better next year, and how do I think about that? And how, how do we measure? And part of it's just for the people, for us, for me on the board, it's, it's not just test scores. It's like, I wouldn't know what that dashboard would look like that I would go back to every six months and say, oh, it's getting better. Like, all trends are positive.
And I think that also has something to do, we talked about this last night as well, the, there's been a lot of transition in leadership. So the people who are giving us the presentations and the way the presentations are crafted are very different every time we're getting them.
Right.
You know, the hope would be that, you know, Ms. Jammon will look back at the presentation she gave us last year
Correct.
and build on it, right, to help us with that.
Right.
So that it's not just starting new every, that would be the hope.
Both stability at the leadership level and at the board level.
Yeah.
So because we're having this conversation as a board, or you're having this conversation as a board right now. And it definitely has an influence then on our work, my work with the administration. But so last night, as an initial layer of that, we were talking about the importance of stability at a leadership level and inclusive of, at a board level as well. Because it allows you to sustain, these are, these are conversations that have to be sustained over years. Not change from year to year. That's how we'll see, I think, have an impact on the operation of the, the school district and the governance of the school district in your case. So I think it's a great point.
And as those, those key ideas and commitments we're making, as they come into clear focus and we, you know, really thinking clearly about, you know, how is it that you can determine or set a, set a number or collect data on something like wellness? What does it mean? What does that growth curve even look like?
Right. It's like a portfolio assessment for a student.
Correct.
It's the same sort of thing. It's like, like, here's my drawing and here's my, my creative writing. It's not just here, here are all my greatest, right?
And I think that feeds into the other thing that was brought up about keeping, um, creating some sort of mentorship or orientation for new board members. As we talk about stability and the board, that's part of it, right? So that new board members can feel supported and get, get working, uh, right away, instead of taking a year to figure out, what am I doing? Um, yeah. So I think it's a conversation that continues.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it's not something we need to, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would like to, um, you know, just commend the board because, uh, over the last 18 months, I think there's been, we've had three, maybe four retreats. We're now engaging outside of retreat right now, but, um, in a, in a self-evaluation that the board has taken very, very seriously. Um, and I just think, uh, what is unique and, um, uh, we should be, should be acknowledged, uh, within all of this is that this is time proactively, um, that's being, uh, put in towards examining the governance structure of the school district. It's really encouraging, um, for me. Um, and I think I would hope for our community as well. And, um, I don't see, uh, the reason I probably can't give you an answer on communication because I don't know if, uh, many districts are taking the time to, and I'm not being critical, but to take the time to really examine that. Um, so, and, and I have a sense of confidence as the board, uh, um, you know, says it now that we're going to follow through and really spend some time on it, uh, maybe towards the end of the school year, um, and examining it in a retreat-like format. But I do think that's what, uh, separates, um, uh, you know, this board from, from others. And I've always described, as folks ask me, what's, uh, the relationship like, or what's your board like? I said, I am blessed to have one of the most highly functional boards that I'm, I'm aware of. And I am a guy who watches board meetings, you know, and whatnot, just to see how are other districts approaching this. But, uh, we're, we're in a good place. So hopefully that's something that would, uh, will continue.
I'll reach out to our Westchester Putnam School Boards Association colleagues and see if any of them have any bright ideas.
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, good. So, uh, John, you're going to set up a retreat, year-end retreat and kind of keep us on that timeline?
So, uh, end of year process will be, um, uh, this was just high-level insights across the standard, standards and then practices, standards and key, key, at the end of the year, we'll just grid ourselves on every dimension and but, and then we'll have a retreat to actually go into it in detail and, and be prepped for next year involving, uh, Peggy and potentially the new person as well. But I think that's a good overlap and allows us to really work, like, what do we want to do? Like, we did all this feedback, which was great, but there, we should probably have some next step, next step of what communication structures. But what does this mean for us? And therefore, what do we do next year?
So, um, I think the dates you had laid out to us previously, I think the only one that's missing is the June retreat date.
Retreat. Do you want to wait until Peggy's?
Yes. I don't want to set her at this second, but I'm just saying out loud that that's still something that we need to firm up.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Absolutely.
Um, okay, going into the approval of the CSE CPSE placement recommendations, Ms. Famulara?
Uh, yes, uh, the recommended actions. Dates be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, district-wide safety team.
Okay. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following individuals to be part of the district-wide safety team for the 2019, 2020 school year. Mr. John Hedlin, Ms. Christine Jammon, Dr. Mary Ann Seelke, Ms. Julia Sniffen, Ms. Tara Rounds, Mr. Chris Salem, Mr. Tim Walsh, Deputy Amanda, Amanda Collier, Mr. Joe Vergidamo, and Mr. Ralph Faloon.
Um, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Uh, Dr. Banante, you want to give a little?
I do. First, um.
Background? We're signing up Ms. Collier.
I, I, we did. Hi. We told you we've been keeping her busy. I also will, uh, perhaps ask for a modification. I left myself off the list.
Oh, add you to the list.
And I should be on there. So, my mistake. Um, so in the past, um, we have used the district health and safety committee, um, to oversee, uh, functions related to, uh, that would by, by law be required functions of a district-wide safety team. Upon consultation without Terris, our school safety and security consultant, uh, they have now advised us, uh, that they strongly, uh, recommend that we name a separate district-wide safety team, um, that, uh, performs the functions as outlined in New York state regulation, which the primary one would be, um, the approval of the district-wide safety plan each year, the development and the approval, um, or I shouldn't say the approval, the development and submission of the plan to the board for approval. Um, and then also as a mechanism, uh, this is not required by necessarily regulation as much as just internally, as our building level emergency response teams are meeting frequently, they meet every month. We need a team that more readily can connect with issues that they may be encountering and want guidance on for district-wide consistency. Our health and safety committee does not meet, um, as frequently as it would need to, uh, to meet the needs of what are, what is, uh, being discussed at our building level safety team. Um, and the law is clear, you, we have to have named a district-wide safety team. So even though we have used a health and safety committee to perform many of these functions in the past, uh, you know, I'm recommending now that we move towards, uh, full compliance with, uh, uh, what the team is called, um, for our district. And you'll see it's mostly internal with, uh, um, the support of, um, our sheriff's deputy as well as, uh, uh, Mr. Faloon as a parent representative. But Mr. Faloon, as you know, is also involved in, um, uh, emergency response services, um, as well. So, um, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nomination of candidates for members of the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Uh, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Famulara to just talk us through this, um, process.
Uh, so there is, there is, uh, an open seat on the BOSI's board, uh, currently, which the BOSI's board, uh, chose not to fill until this time when we have the, um, the annual vote. And this is paperwork that we get every year. They ask us, do you want to nominate someone? And we have not done it before, but there is actually an empty seat this year. So it's sort of an opportunity, um, in a way, if you see it as such, to nominate a person to sit on the BOSI's board. Um, there is a common misconception that that person has to be a member of a school board already. That is not the case. Um, but that, but the nomination takes place within the, the school board's duties. You have to nominate the person, you know, we prepare the resolution to nominate the person and then we send it off to BOSI's and that person is then placed on the ballot that you vote on, um, in whatever the third week of April is. I think it's April 21st or 22nd, something like that, when we also approve the, uh, the BOSI's budget. So, um.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
No, I, I think that gives the overview. I mean, usually if you guys, uh, recall, we get the notice and there's not a lot of competition for these seats. It's usually, oh, there's two open seats. Here are the two people. And we say, great. Once, I think, I remember once there were three people running for two seats, once. And they sent us their resumes and you tried to make an informed decision. Um, so Kathy Lilliborn has been, um, the, is the woman who's not, uh, no longer going to be on the BOSI's board?
No, that's not correct. Kathy is still on the, on the, on the BOSI's board. It, I think it's Anita Feldman who was a long-serving.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Anita Feldman is, is not going to be on anymore, but Kathy Lilliborn used to be a Garrison School Board member and has been continuing on the BOSI's board. Um, but there has never been, to our knowledge, somebody from Haline, um, represented on the BOSI's board. Um, so I think at this stage, the, the information is just for us to consider if any of us would like to raise our hands to be, um, nominated, or if you have anybody in your mind that you would like to solicit to, um, be nominated. Um.
Previous board.
It does, it doesn't, I don't think that has to be.
Not, not a requirement.
No, I actually, I actually attached the requirements as a, uh, in, in the executive content. And I don't know why I put it there. It could be in public content, but it is, um, it's, it's basically the same requirements that you have as, as trustees for the school district. The only difference is that, um, to be a BOSI's board, board member, um, there's only, they only allow one person from each school district. So we can't nominate another person from Garrison. We have to, it has to be, and we, and we can really only nominate someone from our district.
And what's the time commitment? Do they?
Oh, I don't really know.
Do you have any idea? That's a question for Kathy, right?
Yeah. Yeah, she'd be a good person to talk to.
All right.
So I do think this is something we have, there is a timeline with this. So if anybody's has an interest or wants to ask somebody who might be interested, um, do it quickly and, um, be in touch with, uh, Julia and I maybe, and, um, we'll move it along.
Fantastic.
Okay. Um, so we're going into item number four, the discussion of an athletic gear donation. Uh, this is, this item has had a journey. Um, you may have noticed it on the agenda last meeting, and then we took it off because there was some questions about it. And then it was put back on for this, uh, meeting in consent agenda, but one of our board members, uh, had several questions about it. And so it kind of brought up a whole discussion. And so we pulled it off of the consent agenda. And now it's not even here as something for us to vote on. It's just here for something for us to discuss. So it has had a journey. Um, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Banante to try to walk us through that journey.
A long, a long journey. Um, I'll try. Um, so I'll provide some level of detail just because I think it's, uh, it's helpful. Um, I think the board has some background, but for anybody who may be watching, we had an individual who, uh, wanted to make a, a cash donation essentially, um, for the purchase of, of, um, warm-up, uh, gear, uh, for, for basketball, for girls' basketball, JV team in particular. Um, it's common for the girls, they have their uniform, but then they would have some sort of pullover and sweats, uh, that they would wear as part of their warm-up, um, uh, prior to a game or in traveling to a game. Initially, um, as it was presented, um, my thought was, okay, it's a donation to the school. Um, let's put it on a board agenda. Um, as, uh, in keeping with, uh, conversations we've had previously about such. And, and I do want to preface all this by saying, uh, once again, you know, our support organizations here really are just trying to do the right thing by way of what they, what may be the will of the board, um, or policy, um, what the administration has worked on, um, earlier this school year in particular. Um, that being said, this was a unique angle, uh, that I think through further examination revealed, well, this isn't quite the same type of donation that, uh, we have had in other situations this school year. Um, so initially as the donation was made, um, uh, part of the backup, I had, uh, concerns, um, prior to the last school year about whether or not the amount was going fully towards the purchase of the warm-up materials. Um, whereas, uh, some funding seemed to have been dedicated for a different team event. So I was not comfortable, uh, keeping it on the agenda as I examined the backup, uh, because it wasn't the full amount, was, did not appear to be dedicated to the, um, to the gear. Um, so we pulled it. Um, now in anticipation to have that rectified and put on this evening's agenda, um, and it was, uh, for a period of time. Uh, however, um, upon consultation, uh, one of our board members had a question about, well, and a, and a good question about, well, if this is, uh, a donation that's going towards the purchase of these warm-ups, are the girls scheduled to keep the warm-ups? Or are they going to be passed on to, uh, next year's team? And typically with warm-ups, you don't pass warm-ups on, pass uniforms on, but warm-ups on. And, um, the intention was for the girls to keep the warm-up. Well, then the appropriate question is, well, why should the board be acting to accept a donation of something that is not going to become district property? Which makes sense. Um, I will say in my initial interactions with our attorney, because I was curious, I was probably approaching it from a different angle, um, with a different set of questions. Um, and it never was quite that. We never quite got to that level of simplicity, which is where the answer lay. Um, so, uh, the, the attorney initially had, um, or Mike had initially, um, uh, in a thought that I was asking him about a donation that was becoming part of school property. Um, so we were not able, we did not delineate that in our conversations, which I must say are usually late in the evening, uh, when we're both very tired. So, um, no, the, um, so as, upon further discussion with Mike, um, and delineating that, no, this is something the girls would keep. Well, that's not really something the board would act on. Um, you have these supporting organizations. Can the donation just be made to the supporting organization, um, uh, which we have for basketball, girls' basketball? Um, and they can do as they choose with it. Um, if they want to get the kids', uh, uh, warm-ups, uh, they can, and kids can keep them, um, if they want. Uh, so ultimately that's what I have resolved too in, uh, directing, uh, Mr. Salem, uh, or talking this through with Mr. Salem, uh, to speak with the sports association and the donor, uh, to facilitate after tonight, assuming we're all in agreement, uh, the purchase, uh, for the girls, um, uh, moving forward. Um, I, but I think there may be other questions, uh, about that. Mr. Salem's obviously here, uh, because he, he has, works a little bit more closely with the supporting, uh, organize, the team organizations and the booster clubs than I do. And there very well may be some history as well that I'm just not, uh, or I'm still learning, um, uh, you know, to best guide our staff and to best support our, uh, booster club and our sports associations as well. So what I don't want to get lost is the fact that someone wants to obviously, uh, do something good for our kids. Uh, but obviously, uh, um, you know, we've had discussions about this in the past and it can be a slippery slope. Um, so, uh, Mike, uh, has, has resolved that, well, if you're going to do this, this is the easiest way to do it without, um, creating any, um, issue for the board from a governance perspective or a policy perspective. Um, but also acknowledging there may be concerns with that. So, um, we don't fully, uh, we don't oversee our support organizations. So that's why it's a little easier, uh, necessarily to do this. Um, uh, but it's now open for discussion. So thanks for listening to that.
Does anybody have any, um, thoughts about that? Does that make sense? Does that, do anybody have any concerns?
I think the only, the, the, the classic concern would be, uh, is a donation predicated upon any engagement of the parents' child in sports? And it sounds at this point that like the timing is not such, but that's something I think we would always want to be concerned about, even if the board isn't accepting the gift. And the district isn't accepting a gift if it's to a coach and the coach is like, oh, you're going to buy me a bunch of stuff. If your kid plays on my team, great, they're playing on the team. That's not where we want to be. I don't think so, but, um, it doesn't sound like that's.
And I think that that is on the athletic director. I think that, um, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you probably keep a pulse on that. Um, so that there isn't any, so that, so that the quid pro quo is monitored.
Yeah.
Um, not by us, but it, it's monitored by, uh, our athletic director.
And there's, there's no branding or advertising aspect to this.
No, thank goodness.
No, but there is, there is. And that, that was part of my issue. So I'm the one that asked eight thousand questions. Um, and, and some of them probably didn't sound very nice in email. I will, I will say that right up front because it just went on, every time I came up with a question, it opened a new question and it opened a new question and it opened a new question. But you're right, once it boiled down to, well, wait a minute, this isn't even a gift to the school, then it became very apparent that, that this, all of the other questions didn't even matter. Um, but I do have a question and this is for you. Are they going through the store? Have they been using the store as the store was intended? So you guys were, did, missed this and I'm sorry Peggy's not here because Peggy and I were the ones that, that really helped Diana put together this fundraising setup and the whole process of how this was to work. But uniforms are separate than gear. Uniforms belong to the school. They're passed down year to year and they go in a cycle of replacement. Gear is the warm-ups, the extras, the things that the, the people on the team can get, but they are not required to get. But all the teams were getting different levels of gear and different, um, you know, different amounts that they had to pay to get the gear. So then it became a question of, is it pay to play? Is this kid not trying out for this team because they know? out for this team because they know they're going to have to pay $150 for this, for this warm-up outfit, those kind of things? So we, Chris, set up the store as a solution for this, so everyone would be using the same color, the same logo, the same Blue Devil, and everybody would be in the same price range. So anybody could purchase something out of the store, and it would never be required to wear as a uniform, because it says very clearly on the store, everything in here is optional, it is not a uniform, you don't have to buy it. But a lot of them do. That being said, is everybody going through the store? Because that was another one of my questions, was if we take this, why is somebody just not buying it through the store?
So to answer your question, we do have team stores that are available 24/7 online. Anyone can purchase anything at any time. There is a consistent pattern between the logo, the color scheme, all the stuff that you kind of mentioned. Now, the, the one drawback to the store is that it doesn't always offer everything that a specific sport might want. A lot of the stuff is generic. So in some cases, some coaches have sought out different companies that may offer something more sports-specific, a piece of clothing, a certain brand, that kind of stuff. So coaches are occasionally using stuff outside of the stores, but again, everything is still optional. Like, nothing has been required or mandated by the coaches or by any specific teams, because that, I think, was the biggest issue. We wanted kids to all be included and not exclude anyone based on, like you said, pay-to-play or the cost of the warm-up. So everything is still optional, nothing is being forced on the kids.
But the generic part is all part of 17 Shades of Blue. We were trying to get everybody to be same color, same logo, same age, same Blue Devil. And if they go outside of the store, then we automatically open that up again.
I could work on that more with the coaches. I haven't seen any designs from outside sources that are a different shade of blue or a different Blue Devil head. I think our coaches know we want a consistent brand. I think that promotes school spirit and community unity. I don't think I said community unity, so that's interesting. But yeah.
Cost-wise and quality-wise to these?
It's comparable. You know, sometimes it's, it may be cheaper what's outside of the store, sometimes it may be right on par, but it, it depends on obviously the company that the coaches are looking at.
I think in this case, Chris, I had asked you about the warm-ups specifically, is, does the vendor we use offer an option, because I've been on the, I've clicked around on the store a little bit, for, for basketball warm-ups, which I think you're alluding to as one of those sports-specific things. To your knowledge, did the vendor we use for, for the purchase of athletic apparel, does it even offer basketball warm-ups?
Yeah, so it's hard, because a lot of basketball warm-ups now are like the joggers that are a little tighter fitting, like tighter around the ankles. The store we have is more of a generic, like sweat pant, that it's not something that the kids are going to warm up, and it's more like a fleece heavier material where in the winter, that kind of thing. So that's just one example where, you know, the store and an outside company may offer two different things, and it's more sports-specific sometimes, the outside source, not the store.
I would think that it would be very appropriate for the athletic director to approve any warm-ups that is being purchased outside of the store.
Yeah, and I've, I've no-
I mean, I don't know if you do that kind of like informally, but I would think that it would be very appropriate for you to do that, so that the brand that you've established on the store-
Could be consistent.
-is consistent. And they can do that, you know, you can, you can own the PDF file that you send to them and say, this is the devil I want on there, this is the font, you know, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that's definitely something that's doable.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to make extra work for anybody, but I think that would help with the consistency issue.
I honestly assumed you were doing that.
Most of the time I am, but there are cases where, like, they may order something and I don't know about it. But as long as it's optional, you know, I thought that was the biggest thing, but I will look into being more on top of that, even if it is optional.
Yeah, I think optional was definitely the biggest thing, but I think the branding was, was really important. We had kids out there with purple shirts. We had kids out there, we did, we had kids out there with three different Blue Devils of, in the same sport, you know, that we had, it, it was crazy.
Yeah, it's definitely better than what it was.
A thousand times better, a thousand times better. And I never, ever, ever want to be perceived as, I don't want these things for our kids, I want these things for our kids, but I also, it needs to go through the appropriate channels, because we just set up these rules. And if we say, oh, well, it's all, it's all good, well and good, except the JV girls don't want to do it this way, JV basketball, okay, well, we're going to look the other way, especially since, you know, we've been talking about equality among sports very, very up front and center. We can't look the other way for any, any particular team. We want, and equal and equitable are two different things. Is that what you're, is that where you were going? But I'm, and I'm totally okay with that. But we do have to keep in mind that every sport doesn't have warm-ups, every sport doesn't have, every sport has a uniform that's provided by the school, and that is the minimum amount they need. This is where I think you're going. In order to fix this in the future, go ahead, Phil has a plan.
Wasn't going to go there yet, but...
Okay. You want me to go? In order to fix this in the future, Jen and Phil and I have talked at various times about, let's just find, ask all the coaches what they need and, and figure out how much it's going to cost, and find that money in the, in the budget. It can't be a huge number, and then once they cycle through, it will be a smaller amount every year. Is that a no?
No, I think we've started some of that work. There's more to follow. I don't want to give away too much right now.
Yeah, so Chris has his presentation, yeah.
This is next, this is our next meeting.
There's only one budget presentation tonight.
You guys are on the S.
So Chris will present the board with an overview of what he has cost out for, for certain items. We tried to do a generic kind of package, just for, for sake of budgeting. So he'll share with you what the actual costs look like to do it. And then he's tiered it, you know, all student athletes, varsity student athletes, JV and varsity, just so you can kind of see a range of what the cost would be and what the options may be to do so. So that, that is a potential step towards making it even better. I'm glad to hear, you know, that it's better than whatever it was years ago, and I think it'll continue to improve as we keep it front and center. I just want to, you know, clarify that we're not trying to certainly, you know, brush anything aside or turn a blind eye. The scrutiny came out of trying to be transparent about a donation.
Exactly.
And so I, I just don't want that to get lost in the conversation that we were trying to put before the board. You know, what we felt was a donation that needed to be put and approved before the board. Of course, we've realized that, that it was not. But I even think as we cost out what, you know, certain gear for kids, there's always going to be the desire, I think, among parents and kids and whatnot, it's just kind of societal to want a little bit more. But I, so I, I think we're always going to have to come back, even if we make a full commitment to funding a certain base level of gear, there's going to be a desire to fundraise, there's going to be for equipment donations for, for others. So I think we're always going to come back to this in some level. I hope we mitigate it. I hope we're able to continue to take steps to lessen it, or for the school just at base to provide what our kids want, what our families want, for the kids who are representing our community in such a way. But my sense is, we're going to have a few things each year that we're probably going to have come before us that are, we're going to have to, that you're going to deliberate on. My hope is that we continue to refine our procedures and our expectations for people who want to make donations, for teams that want to fundraise, whatever that may be. So it's really consistent across those teams, and it's really clear to the board that we're directing these support groups and/or our administrators are acting fully in accordance with what the board would expect from a governance perspective. And it's just something that over the years, perhaps with shifts in leadership, not to, as an example, I just think it's, it's still, we're still trying to strike that cord or that right balance between the board's expectations and, and how we're guiding donors and teams. And I appreciate your patience, you know, I think it's, we've talked about it a lot this year, it's, it's better, certainly now in the winter than it was in the fall. It'll be better in the spring than it was in the winter, and hopefully next year, you know, it goes off without, without issue. So it's just taken us a little while to calibrate, if you will. And some of these situations are unique, we're just, we haven't encountered them before, you know. It's, it's just, there's a little more nuance than maybe we had initially thought.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chris. And thank you for answering all my questions.
Answered most of them. And I've answered everyone.
I sent a lot of questions.
Is there any communication from the public at this time? Okay, are there any board reflections to share?
I'll throw out a really quick one. I had the pleasure, 7th grade does a Putnam history thing.
Competition.
Competition. I got to go because Josephine participated, but it's great because you have Garrison School participating as well.
Yeah.
Which, and they, the projects were really cool. Like, some of, some of the projects that kids took on were really, really interesting. And so I thought it was a great use of local resources, it was a great collaboration between the two different school districts. So that was really, it was really cool.
How did Josephine do?
She did well. She did well.
Saw that. Josephine received first place.
Yes.
Good news. It's great.
Why aren't you going to say that?
Because that's the point. Because I was talking about the collaboration for the school, they said, not what my daughter did.
That's for me to do.
I have another thing to share, is that the organization I work for, Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, last week, the 10th grade English department, the three teachers in the 10th grade, who shall be named nameless, who were very kind in letting some of my new teaching artists come in and do some practice work with their students on Macbeth. Ms., and Ms. Linda in particular, who has had a relationship with us over time, brought us in and really, I think, prepared her students for my new actors who are learning to be teachers, to really have some kids who knew the play and were really invested and interested and engaged to create a really good experience for them and for our training process. So I was in for one of those classes early in the morning, and it's always a thrill to see, you know, people surprise themselves, and there was lots of surprise and joy in the classroom. So I want to thank them and them.
Nice. Dr. Benante?
I just wanted to mention that we had several school districts visiting today as part of the consortium of Putnam Northern Western BOSEs. I think we had five different districts here as part of a literacy walkthrough at our middle school. So Dr. Silke was facilitating that. They were specifically examining our approach to academic intervention support at the middle school. And it's an opportunity for us, for other districts to learn from us and for us to learn to them by examining a certain classroom practice that's occurring, and then having a real collaborative dialogue afterwards against a standard for what best practice is in the field. So I'm really, we were very proud to, to welcome some school districts from around the region to have on campus today. And I just wanted to mention that, I think most folks don't realize, we're a part of the Chamber of Commerce in Cold Spring. And tomorrow I'll be attending the Chamber breakfast, which is actually being hosted at the Phillips Town Behavioral Health Hub, so I'm looking forward to that. And I'm attending as best I can throughout the remainder of the school year when the Chamber has events. So just wanted to mention that, because a lot of folks don't realize that we're a part of the Chamber, and we're proud members, so.
Isn't the panel about wellness, wellness providers in the community?
It's about wellness, yes, yes, yes.
Great. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.